Follow me.
I gave him a look, I was like, because I didn't remember what this way. Wait, where? Kill him.
Yeah, yeah, the name is Brad. Oh, no, thank you. Check it something.
I've never seen that.
You know what, those two people. We don't have to make that.
I'm not a guy.
You're gonna pay for this time.
Evening, I call the order of this regular meeting of the Leger Town Castle, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, can you please call the room?
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Debrasky.
Here.
Mr. Eichler.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
This is your brother.
Yes, here.
Mr. Soss.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
This is the decade.
Here.
Standing here to ask.
Okay, we have a forum, first item on the agenda is to hear from residents and property owners, are there persons who wish to address the council?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry.
Good evening, Mike Cherry, five ripple wheel drive. Um, I've had a couple of phone calls to me as Chair of the Planning Commission, uh, once they started trimming the ceiling, we started trimming trees in, uh, Leger, asking if Leger was gonna do anything about trees and what people perceive as town-owned open space. Uh, I wasn't able to confirm that it really was town-owned open space, it could just be undeveloped land with trees under it down, but I did tell them that I would bring it up, uh, for residents part of the town council. People are concerned that, uh, branches and trees and open space, that probably ought to be fixed, some of the recommendations are waterings like the stations to do for firewood and such, um, I don't know which commission committed it, but.
Neither do I, does anybody have any suggestions? Land use.
Could you land use if it's town-owned property?
Okay, Mr. Debrasky, over you.
We'll take it over by the.
Okay, thank you, is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council? Yes, Mr. Holders.
Uh, Dave Holden, twenty-nine, Chinchill, Rock, I wanted to ask that the Town of Leger send a letter to the Grotten Utilities and the Grotten City Council, making absolutely clear what the Town of Leger's position is on the, uh, floodfront precinct. Uh, I say as, as a member of the union, that, uh, we have, of course, have advocated that, uh, that maybe there could be something put in as a paragraph in the new water contract with the, uh, problem, but, uh, that some members of the WPCA didn't think that that was appropriate for that kind of linkage because it would be complicated, or make the negotiations more complicated than we did. But, on the other hand, should we, the Town of Leger, the mayor, the council, and the WPCA be very clear about what the position of the Town of Leger is on that trail? Uh, it seems that whenever some of us go to the meetings of the Grotten Utilities or to the Grotten City Council, we're treated as if we're a couple of gadflies, and we, and we don't, our opinion really doesn't need to be answered or addressed. And, uh, I, I think it would be helpful if they knew that they weren't just dissing a couple of gadflies, but they would be dissing the whole Town of Leger if they didn't, uh, pay attention to what we believe. And so, I'm saying, I'm advocating that we send this letter, I've made a draft, I'm gonna give it over here to Rossine, uh, I've made a draft which says that, uh, we, we, the Town of Leger believe that, uh, public access ought to be allowed on, uh, Grotten Utilities property, and it should be along this trail which is specifically designated on the bachelor plan. And we say why we believe that. And we also suggest that in the next couple of months, good faith discussions ought to take place over the issues involving, we know that there are some issues that need to be resolved, but, though interested in more, let's have some good faith discussions about these issues, and let's have it happen soon. That's what I would like to say, once you decide that Chair of the Council, the WPCA will, and, uh, thank you.
Okay, um, I would ask that members of the council, if anybody has any objection to, uh, Mr. Holden's proposal, to, uh, let me know, otherwise, my intention would be within a week to take his proposed letter and, uh, send it on to the mayor, give the mayor the option of co-signing if he wants, but, uh, so it'll either be my letter or it would be a joint letter, depending on what the mayor's, I, since I can't speak for him, and, uh, and we'll go from there.
But who's the last council sent the same type of a letter? And the idea of David Holden being a gadfly is just too comical to me, but we did send that, we did send that letter once, and I think we should do it again.
Okay, maybe this time we should threaten to take back the, uh, eighteen thirty-nine decision to break away. Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and the next item is committee commissions and boards reports that we have tonight, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Burnier, to, uh, make a presentation, uh, for those people here tonight who were not here two weeks ago, or, or watching, uh, two weeks ago, it came to the council to, uh, agree to fund twenty thousand dollars for what would be paid to an architect to look at a proposed school construction involving the Leger Middle School, and the council tabled that, um, and there were various reasons, uh, without going back into them, uh, the presentation tonight is part of an effort to have more direct dialogue between the Board of Education, uh, and the Town Council on trying to come up with a way forward. So, with that, I actually see it's not Dr. Burnier, but it's, uh, Mimi Pecklewell, and good evening, and please proceed.
I'm Mimi Pecklewell, and I am the Chair of the Facilities Committee for the Board of Education. And for our visitors here, I just wanted to clarify that, unlike the Town Council that's governed by the, um, town ordinances and, uh, the codes, the Board of Education must comply with the State of Connecticut statutes, so we are organized under those statutes. As the, the Facilities Chair, I'm here to discuss with you the, uh, recommendation that we had passed on to you concerning the twenty thousand dollar, um, fee for the architect to review and provide a feasibility study. I would like to go back, uh, to when this, uh, when our, our proposal began, uh, was well in advance of September two thousand and ten, but it, it was, um, moved at this time because of the core, common core standards, which, um, the state has mandated, and which we are in the process of complying with. In our discussion about, uh, the educational needs of the students of Leger, we've, um, been working, and Dr. Burnier will explain the educational aspects, I'm here to explain the facility aspect and our strategic plan for the future to be able to meet the educational needs of the students of Leger. In order to meet those educational needs, the Board of Education has come up with, uh, three, uh, recommendations. The first is moving sixth grades to the Leger Middle School, the second is to open space for all-day kindergarten, and the third is to recommend the closing of an elementary school. Now, of course, I read the patch this morning, and I, I hope a lot of you already have too, that makes my job a little easier. In, Dr. Burnier will explain the necessity to co-locate our sixth graders with seventh and eighth graders. He will also discuss what the need is to have all-day kindergarten when we, um, move into the Common Core standards, and the need to increase the educational component of kindergarten, um, students day, and why it needs to be extended. It seems to be the, uh, the element which has been not discussed as much is, um, the thought that we were going to increase the footprint of the schools in Leger, and that is totally false, that is not a recommendation from our Facilities Committee nor the Board of Education. In fact, um, in order to accommodate the other two, and be fiscally conservative and make it a, uh, a recommendation that could be funded by the Town of Leger, we would also be recommending closing an elementary school, which would, um, note, which would take into consideration the timing enrollment, but would also take into consideration, um, the ability to reorganize our district to best meet the needs of the, the educational needs of the students of Leger. So, in order to get farther into the educational needs, I would like to introduce the Board of Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Mike Burnier.
We have a little bit of a technical malfunction here, but I think they'll be able to follow what we're doing. Really, the, the educational needs, and I, I wanna thank Mrs. Grabner, who is no stranger to this body, uh, and is now, uh, both on the Board of Education and on the Board's liaison to permanent, uh, Municipal Building Committee. But, basically, we have been thinking about doing something with middle school for a long time, uh, but in July of two thousand and ten, Connecticut adopted the Common Core State Standards, so that, uh, the best word I've heard was our, our chairman, Mrs. Hightower, said the other day, it's a revolution, and I'm gonna show you a little bit of revolution tonight, but, but basically, what we're thinking is, in order to implement the Common Core State Standards, really, the, the standards are written, by the way, at K to five, six to eight, and nine to twelve, and the sixth grade, I can tell you right now that algebra is moving to the sixth grade, uh, so the first, the first thing that, that jumps out at you is the idea that the, the curriculum is becoming far more rigorous, and that the instructional needs, uh, are, are becoming much more difficult for teachers, so, right now, we have teachers, sixth grade teachers, who basically teach all subjects, we, we believe, uh, to be competitive, to remain competitive, we need to have teachers that are certified as, or at least context-specific, as math teachers in the sixth grade, and science teachers, and so forth. And we also, uh, we also believe, uh, I, I know, today, we, we check, about sixty percent of the districts in our, just, our, our district reference, sort of, district certified like Leger, uh, have all-day kindergarten, uh, about twelve percent of them have, uh, some form of all-day kindergarten, like we do, we have all-day kindergarten for our, our most at-risk children, uh, and then the remaining thirty-eight percent, uh, at this time have no plans for all-day K. But, I can, I can tell you, all-day K, while it has been a goal, uh, there's been practice problems, still have room for all-day K, so, so, a couple of things came together, moving the sixth graders out, creating a six through, six through eight, middle school made sense, and, and then, as, uh, Mrs. Pecklewell said, the recommendation to the Town Council to close an elementary school, we'd close a school of about forty-seven thousand square feet, and create an additional wing, uh, of about twenty-five thousand square feet. So, we, we, of course, we think it'd be much more efficient, there'd be, there'd be economies of scale that we would, uh, we would need, but, but, but basically, when, when you look at this document, and I'm just gonna go through it with you very quickly, uh, this is the fourth grade, this is, uh, the front sheet, I presume, is a summary, uh, the front sheet of this paper says it's a smarter balance assessment consortium. Smarter balance assessment consortium is, is a group of states that are working, because the CMTs and the CAP tests that, uh, we've known for many years, they are gonna go away in two thousand and fourteen, there will be no CMT, there will be no CAP test, it will be replaced by a national exam, every child in the whole country is gonna take it, it's gonna be a hundred percent on the computer, um, and so we are working hard to gear up the cycle for that eventuality, uh, which, two thousand and fourteen sounds like fifteen years in the future, uh, unfortunately, that's only two years in the future. So, this is, this is the fourth grade, this is a sample test of, of the fourth grade, so let me, let me just, and, and it is a performance test that frankly, we, we take, it is recommended to take for three to four days, but here, here's the test, uh, if you turn to the third page, it says preparing to open a new store, so, the fourth grader is given the chore that they are, they are opening a new grocery store, and their, part A is they, they are asked to do a store layout, and they're given, uh, some dimensions of shelving, and refrigerators, and, uh, and registers, and aisles, and so forth, so if you turn the page, it, it then says to the children that you have to use exactly a certain number of refrigerators, and a certain number of shelves, and all that sort of stuff, and the way they do it is on the next page, it's a drag-and-drop computer analysis, that the fourth graders would have to go and grab a shelf, and, and design the store and, and the layout. Part B is a, a letter to the Fire Commissioner justifying that the fourth grader's design of the, of the layout of the store is, is, uh, going to be sufficient in terms of the occupancy and so forth. If you turn the page, there's, there's some work, but, part C is the store hours, the children are told that the store has to be open for fifteen hours, there has to be some business time, and there has to be some stocking time, and, and they're given some parameters for employees when, when they work, and, and there's a space there for their, for their answer. Part, part D is they, they have to actually develop the work schedules, uh, for sixty employees, uh, ensuring that they have enough, uh, time to cover, to cover all the slots and so forth, uh, and then, that they're, they're explaining what, what they are, are paid. Then they have to determine in, in part D, the, the pricing of, of the items, so that they make sufficient profit, uh, for the, for the items that, that are being sold, uh, and, and this, uh, and then there's some rubrics, uh, that are, that are given, uh, to, to guide the answers, and then, there's a final rubric at the end, plus five point four point three, and so forth. This is a sort of, sort of chore, first of all, it'll notice, it's not just a mathematical chore, uh, there's a text involvement here, there's writing involvement here, there's some really deep numeracy involvement, and, and, and as we, as we go about our business, uh, trying to implement this Common Core, uh, and this is just the fourth grade, uh, I was, I was in a, a third grade class the other day, and, and the children were working on a problem, and, and the problem was that somebody went to a birthday party, and threw up and blew out three-quarters of the candles on the cake, and, from my mathematical background, I thought for sure they were gonna say, the person is twelve years old, how many candles did they blow out, but that, that wasn't the question, the question was, how old could the person be? And I've tried that on several adults, now, these were just third grade babies, uh, I've tried that on several adults, and, and they came back to me after about an hour, and said, is it multiples of four, and I go, right, okay, you got a good idea. The, what, what we are expecting of children, what the Common Core State Standards are expecting of children, uh, is really much, much more, much more rigorous than ever before, and so, one of the, one of the things on, last item on this particular slide is, we want to do this, we believe we need to do this reorganization to maintain Leger as, as an attractive competitive school. These are going to be the, the tests that are gonna be implemented over the next several years, these are gonna be very, very high stakes, it's gonna be, as I said, the exact same test for the kids in California, and test us in Florida, uh, and it is gonna be far more difficult, this is just the math portion, there's a whole science component that goes with this, which is why the one-sixth grade teacher, there's a whole linguistics component, a far more difficult test, so, so when, when we saw these, uh, these new requirements, of course, we, we became very concerned, and, and we realized that this is a big challenge, and any of you who know teachers know, uh, they're, they're all sort of, uh, very concerned about this, because these are, these are really quite difficult educational challenges, and I, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Pecklewell to come back and talk a little bit about the study that we're coming up with, and then I'll give you some comments.
Of course, we've, uh, begun working on the, the, uh, Common Core State Standards, and with developing the Leger Superintendent, and assisting Ted Patterson, and, and all our, um, specialists and teachers throughout the district are geared to be able to get our educational system up to snuff, and the curriculum in place begin the state standards. While they're doing that, we as the, the board members are looking at how we're going to be able to, um, logistically take care of this educational pursuit. And therefore, um, one of the elements that had been discussed, and we knew that in the recent, um, town, uh, study, aligned study, had, uh, mentioned a, uh, an addition to the middle school, but with no particularity, and certainly with a price tag that was not fiscally, um, reasonable for the Town of Leger, and we are keyed in on keeping our, our logistics affordable for the people of Leger, while also making it an enhancement for people to come here and live here. So, what is this architectural study all about? It is in fact, what we're going to use to determine whether it's feasible to even consider the addition of a wing at Leger Middle School. If it isn't feasible, if, uh, the design concept includes size and features, cost estimates, um, and possible upgrades to the existing building, to make this facility worthwhile, i- if it's not feasible, if we find out that, um, there's wetlands, there's other issues, then we're going back to square one. Uh, we can't bring forth a recommendation that, to close a school, to put on an addition to a, uh, an existing school, if we don't know step one, which is, is it feasible? a, an existing school if we don't know step one, which is, is it feasible? And we believe that this study, which is more in the line of what the board had envisioned before the prior study was done, should be able to show us the way. And where Dr. Ganey is going to go over what our timeframe is, we have, we have been looking for the timeframe so that we could, common core standards and our logistics could be close to get.
Well, I'll just go through a quick timeline and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. But basically what we're thinking is, should the project for the architectural study be approved, that that study would be done in the summer. The feasibility then would be studied by the board in, in the fall. If the, if the plans went as, if the plan went forward, we would then come to the town council and request that there be a referendum. And so I'm guessing that would be late fall, there would be a referendum next May, May of two thousand thirteen. In June of two thousand thirteen, we would then forward that, if, if, again, it passed a referendum, it would be sent down to state legislature. So from June of thirteen to June of fourteen, it would be considered by the Connecticut State Legislature. And then if, in fact, it was funded in June of fourteen, we would, we would begin the process, well, actually, the possibility committee would start the process. So I'm, I'm guessing, hoping that the, that the school, the new wing of the school, if it went that far, could be opened in the fall of two thousand fifteen. So three and a half years from now. And at that point, we would, the board would recommend the closing of the middle school. So that's the, that's sort of the big picture. And Mrs. Peckel Allen and Mrs. Preacher and I would be happy to answer any questions. If you have questions, I might ask.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Grant.
Would that grammar school be available? If all of...
According, well, according to this, we, we would need the, we would need the space until we moved into the other place. So it would be in the, in the fall.
So three and a half years.
Well, actually, in the summer, the summer, yeah, yeah, three years, just about three years from now.
Okay.
But like I said, there's a lot of hurdles that we have to jump over to get to that. But I, I think it's reasonable. I think if we've got a cost estimate, I did some square footage cost estimate today for, for what it's worth. The, the, the state has a formula. And it depends on what grade your building, but if you build a wing for sixth graders, each sixth grader gets a hundred and fifty-six square feet. I have no idea how they calculate that number. That's the number. We would, for, for about hundred seventy-five to two hundred sixth graders that we'd be moving into that building, assuming our enrollment space, that would require about twenty-seven thousand square feet. And the architects tell us that about two hundred is the dollars per square foot. So it'd be about seven and a half million dollar project. Seven and a half million dollar project with the state paying two-thirds, the town of Ledger would have to bond over a two and a half year period, about two and a half, let's say, I'm always wrong on these things, dismissing the ironically. So I'll say three million, I'll, I'll be wild and say three million. So the bond, so the town would have to bond a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years. We would save way, way more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. We'd save, we'd save a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year probably for four years from now, just by not having that extra principal. Never mind the electricity, never mind the heating, never mind the maintenance.
And the three schools that would be left would be able to absorb?
Yeah.
The all-day kindergarten.
Yeah. Assuming our, our enrollment, you know, I, I live in fear that there's a baby room and, you know, I guess that could happen. But we, we've had a five-year trend of about fifteen percent reduction. I think it's in many ways tied to the economic situation. But assuming we're, we're flat, we, we, we know that we have sufficient space, we've sort of done all, we've run all those numbers. And, and like I say, I, it, it would be efficient, I think it would be a far more cost-effective way to run the district. But most, from my perspective, most importantly, you would give our sixth graders a middle school education that I always thought was a good idea, most of the, I think seven percent of the schools in this country are organized, seven, eight. Most of the schools in, in this area are either five, six, seven, eight, or, or, or six, seven, eight. You know, there are, there are lots of, I'm sure people are going to think of lots of good things and lots of bad. We'd like to start world language in the sixth grade, I would like to see our students. We have world language in the middle school now, sixth graders can get that. But most importantly, they would get content-specific math teachers, science teachers, all the studies.
Counselor Jones. I was wondering, and I think this was partially answered, I was wondering how much of an idea we could get at this point without a study of how many of the problems in the middle school would be fixed, namely the partitioning arrangement. In other words, if we...
Yeah, good question.
Are we just putting a wing on or are we fixing some of the...
Well, the twenty thousand, we, we, we also put in the bid that the architect would address upgrades. There are ADA concerns, I know when they built Gil's first school, there was a little concern about that. But yes, I would, we would ask the architect to, to look at everything from, this would not be the seven million dollars, I think, the wing would be seven million dollars, but we could look at interior walls, which I think would make a lot of people very happy. The problem with interior walls, I've been to one school that did this, schools that were, for, for about a six-month period in nineteen seventy-two, everybody thought no walls was a great idea. Then they built them and they realized it's a really not a good idea. And so they stopped building them. There's a school, I think it's in, had a building worth, and they, they built, they built classrooms inside this big open space. And they ended up with classrooms that were about fifteen feet wide and forty-five feet deep, in a sort of cavernous. So there are a lot of problems with doing that. But getting modern dividers, that's a real possibility. We, we also want to see if the heating plants of the current building would, would heat the new wing or propose the new wing. So there's a lot that we'd have to look at. And we would, and we would report on all of that. You know, my, my initial response to all of this is, I see such educational value. I think this would be a huge step forward for our school in, in building the wing. So if we did that and nothing else, I, I would, I would be happy. If, if we could do some upgrades, I'd be delighted. If we could put the interior walls in at a reasonable price, I'd be ecstatic. But just getting the wing would be a huge step forward for our school district.
Can you speak to other options? I mean, specifically, if you are spending money to study the feasibility of this, and then you have all these other reasons why something's got to happen. So what's the fallback if this is, is not feasible?
I think, as Mrs. Peckel Allen said, we're going to have to go back to square one. There isn't really a good other option. You know, we could, we could, I mean, I, I've heard, I've heard lots of people, well, obviously some people are saying maybe about building a new middle school, which, which would be a huge expense. I've heard people talking about building a new high school that, that would be well in excess of a hundred million dollars. I, I don't think we have great options. I think, I think this is the modest option. Maybe the wing would not be on the side of the building that I think, I don't know. But we'll, we'll come back, we'll come back with feasibility study. And, and if, you know, as Mrs. Peckel Allen says, if this doesn't work out, we're, we're going to have to, we know what our goals are, the goals are pretty clear, very clear. We would have to come back and we will make a report to the town council and tell you exactly what we found and what sort of, what sort of contingencies then we might have from there. But as Mrs. Patterson often says, this is our best thinking at this moment. I know of no, I know of no better thing that we could do for our school district to get ready for this educational, this new education different than this. And the flip side of that coin is, if we don't do anything, I think we're really going to find ourselves in a non-competitive place. This is a, this is a time in, in, I think everybody understands that. This is a time in American education where, where this governor, this commissioner, and frankly, the national government, they want reforms and they are, they are driving reforms. There's no question. When you look at the kindergarten standards that the children benchmark it in kindergarten, is they have to add and subtract using the digits one to five, not, not know their numbers like in the past, you know their letters, but to say to a child, you know, you've got five apples and somebody takes three of them away, how many do you have left? To do that with, with automaticity, that's a whole different level of, of rigor that we are expecting our children to achieve. And, you know, and, and children around the world are achieving this. This is, this is not some wild plan, something, this is, you know, as people say, this is twenty-first century learning. And you also notice that they have to do, A, they have to take all their tests up on a computer. And, and, and all the kids are going to have to take the same test pretty much at the same time, which is, it's going to be a technological challenge for us. So another aspect of this new wing would certainly be modern technology that you could build into. Because God knows, well, all of the schools, including the middle school, which is the youngest actually, well, nobody ever thought about promethan boards and banks of computers and our electricity systems. All of our schools are really struggling to keep up. But I, I think we'd have, the honest answer is, we'd, we'd come back and tell you some other alternatives if this didn't work.
Okay. How many classrooms do you need in order to accommodate all-day K?
How many more?
Yeah, district one. I mean, it would seem to me like you need to accommodate a hundred kids, I mean, it's two hundred kids in a, in a year group, right?
Well, it's one seventy-five now.
Okay, but, but you already have half that space.
We do.
So you, you're looking for space for the second half. And so, and how many kids in a kindergarten classroom?
Well, we have, we have half, we're another way of saying that, we need to double our, our classrooms.
Right.
We need to double the kindergarten.
I guess that's my question, what is that?
Oh.
Three, six, seven, or eight, nine.
Well, we have, we have kindergarten academies, so I think, I think six or seven is a better, a better academy.
Okay.
And there are nine sixth grades that, that move out, hence we have the space.
Okay. But you want to close an entire school? I mean, if it's the one across the street, that's really like twenty...
Right, right.
Twenty-something classrooms.
Yeah, right, right. If we, if we closed an entire school and we took out a hundred seventy-five students and, and reorganized, we actually have the classroom spaces to do that. There are, for example, there are, there are, there are classrooms, right now they're being used on unlimited basis by non-whole class activities, like speech pathologists working, could be working out of an office, but they're worked out of classrooms now. We've, we've done, I've done those numbers very carefully. I certainly didn't come over, I think, I didn't know how we could do that. As I said, the wild card is if, if the population starts to go up, then we would, we would have to probably consider working classrooms. It, it wouldn't be the end of the world. There's, there's also a possibility, we have three classrooms dedicated to early childhood. And when I was the principal of Wyfford High School, early childhood was at the high school. It's actually at a lot of high schools because high school students study child development. So one of, one of the efficiencies we've been achieving is also by, by doing that. We'd have to, you know, all of this, of course, would depend, as I've been talking and the committee has been talking about the new wing, the sixth grade, the sixth graders moving to the middle school, all of that is really dependent upon the feasibility actually of building a wing. And we are probably one architect's opinion away from saying, I'm sorry, but that just, that can't be done for a different reason. So from the board's perspective, before we came to the town council, we wanted to be sure we had a viable project we would consider.
Other questions? Yes, Counsel Frank.
The all-day kindergarten, is that something that this entire state is going to and the school districts? Or the districts that are not doing that, so how are they going to meet the board standards? And why are we not choosing that now?
It, it is being discussed as a mandate, I, but I think we're, we're several years away from that action. I, I don't think that they see that as a mandate. I think what this governor is going to do is put more money into early childhood preschool education and, and leave it to the municipalities. It's strongly recommended. Well, all you have to do is talk to kindergarten teachers and, and say, how can you do this math and, and reading and all the other activities, plus a, a music class, a PE class, in a two and a half hour period of time? Just, you can't do it all. So the, you know, that's why a majority of, of school districts have and more and more are going to all-day K.
I think the number was, you mentioned right now, it's thirty-eight percent don't have all-day K.
Right.
Thirty-eight percent in this state don't have it. Monmouth's having it next year. So it is moving in that direction. Most schools who do not have it now...
Long towns are, yeah, there's a few.
Yeah, they're moving in that direction.
Other questions? Okay, well, I thank you very much for your presentation. Just as a, as a general plan, the mayor normally addresses the council every meeting. And if he doesn't offer any information about a new police station plan, I tend to ask him about it. But then, we tabled last time the motion on the twenty thousand, so that's going to come back as to whether or not we want to take that off the table and have a discussion. And I think the way forward would be to try to say, okay, given, given the plan that you would like to move forward on, and depending on whatever the mayor says, then the council last can decide, what if anything, we want to actually go spend the taxpayers' dollars?
Would that action be taken in my opinion?
Uh, yes.
The untablewing for...
Yes.
Continue to...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is comments to town council.
Yes, Counsel Johnson?
I want to pass along a message from the Ledger Music Department. May fourth and fifth, that's Friday and Saturday, at the Ledger High School Auditorium at seven thirty PM, there'll be a production of Bye Bye Birdie. And for those watching at home, I'm sure you would love the opportunity to see Mr. Lou B. Boardy acting in the role of mayor. And if you would like, you can purchase ten tickets for ten dollars for adults, five dollars for students, general admission, or an advance, fifteen dollars for adults, ten dollars for students, if you're courtesy. We'll see you all there.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Counsel Grant.
Just wanted to talk about the social services department. We now have a very vibrant social services board with eight members and a very active social services department. They, every month, they service about thirty residents who come to use the food locker. They take advantage of LICEP, which is the Ledger Interchurch Emergency Assistance Fund, to provide heating and fuel assistance to people who kind of fall through attacks. They use Salvation Army and they pretty much know how to direct people who are in need. We have a counselor and she supervises three interns, so they come for nothing, as part of their education. And they have, they're doing at the moment about ninety, I'm a little confused, of counseling. So it's, it's really quite an active department.
Okay, very good. Other comments, town councils? Seeing none, next item on the agenda is minutes approval. We have before us the... We have before us the minutes of the special meeting of April 5th, 2012, the public hearing minutes of April 11th, 2012, that was on the Club Farm lease, public hearing minutes of April 11th, 2012, which was on provisions to ordinance 126, and the regular meeting minutes of April 11th, 2012. Okay, they've all been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, please call the board.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath? Yes. Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee, or Mr. DeBroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Seven favor, zero opposed?
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, we have a communications list. Any comments, questions, additions? Okay, referrals, I have none to announce at this time. The subcommittee reports, Administration Committee, Councilor Grant.
The Administration Committee has not met since our last town council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Community Services also reporting for that committee.
I will report for Community Services. At our last meeting, we had an in-depth discussion with the police force about potential for a new firing range. We had some good discussion with them and we took no action. It was an advisement meeting, so there was no action to be taken. And we also spent a fair amount of time talking with FX Williams from the senior, senior building over there and his concerns regarding the exercise activity of the seniors. And that comprised most of our meeting.
Okay.
And again, we took no action. There was no action to be taken.
All right. Any questions for Community Services? All right, next is Finance, Councilman Francis.
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday and took no action.
Okay, and we had a public hearing last week on the budget.
And the public hearing was held on the 19th at the Auditorium of High School. The presentations were made for the general government budget as well as the board bed budget and the time to receive the town council.
Okay, and.
And we saw the review of all of this.
And on our agenda tonight is a final opportunity to make any revisions prior to sending it to Refrain. All right, Information Technology Committee, Councilor Holmes.
Information Technology Committee has not met since our last.
All right, thank you. Land Use Public Works.
Land Use met last evening. We forwarded an ordinance, the ordinance is, I could say, combined planning of zoning provisions to admin. We're going to get two ordinance this summer, so you're going to look at.
Thank you.
We discussed updates from the Leger Town Center Committee regarding if they approve the installation of some pavings over on the corner to kind of complete that walkway path, walkway up from the corner to the steps. And also the updates on planned work for moving some light bulbs that are currently used by the Fair Committee and the preparing of the former campus for system maintenance and law enforcement, for the sole wallet. The Town Center Committee is currently planning a ribbon cutting ceremony for June 5th. It's 10th of May, so they're going to have. We're forwarding to the town council approval for a needment of one of these fields for support for the installation of a radio tower above the town property. We've heard limited discussions also on the big underwriting process for the planning of that, as well. We also feel that that's.
Good discussions. Questions? I have a question on the Town Center Committee. Is the plan to wind them down as a committee when this work is over? And will they be a continuing, ongoing committee to look at, get other changes?
Potential resumption of the Town Center Committee. It was only supposed to be one year. We're talking about six now, but. The desire of the Town Center Committee has always been, and this goes back to council executive, we've got a lot of plans that just sit on the shelf and it does. And they want to ensure that that plan doesn't collapse in the coming years. So their opinion that they might remain for some longer permit, so that they can continue the form of the community.
Okay, I guess what I would be looking for is a conclusive report from them at some point that said, this is, this project that's spent money is done. And, you know, here's an accounting of the finances and they continue in some sort of advisory capacity. I think that's fine. But I think we need to have a definite endpoint to the finances involved in making actual modifications. Next is Board of Education liaison, Councilman Davis, she's not here, but I actually heard from the Board of Education directly already tonight. WPCA liaison, Councilor Holmes.
Yes, the new WPCA, I'm happy to report, held its office, its organizational meeting Monday, April 23rd. It was attended by all of the new members of the WPCA, including Mike Cherry, Tony Secome, Jim Diaz, Terry Jones, Tony Cameron, including the fifth, Kevin Ed Lynch, as well as councilors and former WPCA members, John Sullivan, Mary McGrath, and Bill Song. Mike Cherry was elected chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Cherry. And we want to thank each of the volunteers for stepping up for this important responsibility. The new WPCA reviewed a list of transition items that the former WPCA had been working on, including a review of WPCA policies and procedures. And the new WPCA will meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM. Also, the Algen Heights Project continues to move forward. Brock Utilities is working to coordinate road reconstruction in the plans with the laying of mains and bids should be going out the next few weeks for construction. So that's good news. And finally, the WPCA office staff has moved into the former judge's chamber conference rooms. So for those who come to Leger Center to pay their water bill, the WPCA is now downstairs, but in a different office. And they have their own door, you can come in the main office downstairs and you can just. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for WPCA? All right, are there any other liaison reports? All right, seeing none, the board of the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
We have a new highway superintendent who is coming on board. He will be on board by May 7th. And a zoning, wetlands enforcement officer will be on board on May 21st. So we're very pleased with the individuals that have been selected and they will be coming in within the next couple of weeks to do the normal check-in that they have to do some administrative things. And we will have a chance to speak with them in the morning at that time. I attended the municipal building committee and I did request their support in citing and designing of a police facility. And I have sent to the council a request for $20,000 for support of this effort similar to what we have appropriated for the board of education. The Public Safety Commission has prepared a specification for emergency dispatch services. I'm in the process of reviewing that and just to see whether it in fact evades the message that we're trying to convey to those who may be interested in providing that service. And then my plan is to put a cover letter on that, send that to interested parties, and ask them for basically a proposal, not at this time a price or things like that, but just to see who's interested out there, including our own dispatch services and what they would propose to us. Two representatives from CLMP, these are individuals that we've met before, attended the Public Safety Commission. They are working very close with, closely with the town. They continue tree trimming throughout the town. They've done their standard tree trimming. They will shortly be giving what they call their extended tree trimming. They're going through with home notifications on that. So it's going to be an ongoing process and we should soon be able to see the results of that. There are some roads that they've gone, you can tell if you could just see the freshly cut limbs at the base of the tree. The question was asked about tree trimming along roads and in terms of, in terms of some of the town-owned property. You know, in addition to the work CLMP is doing, our road crews are out there also. We're taking advantage of the weather and we have crews out there right now. They are planning to begin work on Spicer Hill Road from the high school up to Churchill Road. What they are doing is they are notifying every homeowner of the, of what is going to happen. So there's no surprises with that. So far, we haven't had any negative comments and people are very interested in having that done. So you will see that activity after that, that we move in the other direction down to Gallup Hill Road. So between CLMP and ourselves, and between CLMP and our own public works, you will see a significant amount of tree trimming going on. Obviously, if there's town-owned road, if there's town-owned property, if there are preserves along the road, we would treat that property the same as any other. I, I know what people talk about, we're talking about, you know, forestry that's inside that property. And, you know, I know when you ride through some of the woods, it is, it is disturbing to see trees that are in there that are fallen and things like that. And, you know, in this country, we don't do a very good job of thinning out the forest and we pay for that every once in a while. It was many years ago that Avalonia, between Christie Hill Road and Long Cove Road caught fire and it was quite something to see, especially if you were neighboring property. And, but it cleared out and, you know, replenished itself. But there are areas that I know we have talked about doing controlled logging and forestry work. That's something we certainly should consider on some of the town-owned property. WPCA staff has been working very hard and they've been, they've been working very proactively to verify the customer base. And through some of the preliminary work that they've done, we've found some addressed things as far as some omissions and, so I think they're proceeding very well. And we did have a conversation with a trim line hammer to give us some advice on some outstanding accounts and what the procedure should be. Some of it is involved with the WPCA's policies and some of it then would fall into, you know, what do you do beyond those policies? So I'm pleased to see that. There are some parking issues around town, specifically on Gallup Hill Road. You know, I just want to advise those of you that have used the word, oh, it's good to have the school superintendent sat here. Please, we need to get the word out that parking is not permitted on Gallup Hill Road or on Greystone. There are some real safety problems on Greystone. We posted no parking signs and no parking does not mean if you put your car up on the grass that you're not parking. But we have some severe safety problems there. People coming out of Greystone cannot see the cars between the cars on their street and the cars parked on Gallup Hill Road. I will tell you that as much as I would hate to see it happen, at some point, we're going to have to start enforcing that. And I know there's going to be folks that are not happy. We need to get the word. I would recognize that many of these may be out-of-town folks that are coming for sporting events, but this is a safety issue. And then there are still some issues we're dealing with down at Fox Run Apartments to try to come up with a good solution there. The Boepee property adjacent to the sub-base is, the money being provided to Leger to purchase that property, that is on the bonding commission agenda for Friday. So if there is a bonding commission meeting Friday, that money should be approved. We do have a contract with, that Mr. Boepee is reviewing. We have not expended or encumbered any funds for that as of now. But as soon as I get the word that that money has been appropriated, I will be encumbering some money to do, you know, surveys and things like that that we need to do. So that should come along. CBS, they're moving dirt around over there. They are very efficient, unfortunately, they're so efficient that the first thing they did the first day was disconnect the septic system. So we anticipated that, we didn't think they'd be that efficient. But the bid openings did happen yesterday for the septic system. And you remember, we did get a bid from CBS contractor. We, of course, thought that was, you know, good bid, so we went out to bid. And we did save a little bit, a few thousand dollars on the pre-bid. And the good thing is the CBS contractor did win that bid. So we will be dealing with someone who's maybe on-site coordinating that. So we did shut the water off to the building and we'll, we'll get through that quickly. The police firing range, I, you know, if you saw, if you saw me on Channel 3, you know, I did have two sentences to say. Unfortunately, they only played the first sentence. At that point, I wouldn't tell you what the rest of the sentence is saying. But I have begun discussing with my staff about that, what it would entail. If the council has questions, comments, concerns, please forward them to me and I will take that as consideration in working. And as a great thought, thank you.
Okay, questions tonight? Yes, Councilor Holmes.
Comments? At this last, the last town council meeting, so before I came to this meeting, I read the minutes and it stood out to me how much is happening in my, this morning, thank the mayor for that report and this one. A lot is beginning to increase.
Councilor Grant?
Yes. The issue of the firing range, why has that come to the town council? Is that not under your purview as the mayor and the police chief to handle and decide where the firing range should be?
Yes, and that was decided last night by the council. It's a.
Oh.
Yes, yes, that's good.
They didn't give that.
That's good, that's very.
Right, that's why I'm, you know.
I don't, I didn't.
To me, that should have been under your jurisdiction, not the council's.
One, one taken. All I'm asking for now is if you have concerns, because I will.
No.
Okay.
No, I told you. No, I told you.
Okay.
All right. Councilor Grant, it tends to be the first one out there firing. Rowing out of her vehicle. What would you say? Are there other questions for? Okay, thank you. All right, under old business, first item, I will move to remove from the table. The motion to appropriate up to $20,000 from the Board of Education CNR Fund 6 for technical fees for Leger Middle School addition and renovations. Okay, any discussion on removing from the table the motion? Okay, seeing none, Roxanne, please call the board.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddick?
Yes.
Mr. DeBroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Seven favor, zero opposed?
Okay, so the motion is off the table. The actual motion, move to appropriate up to $20,000 from the Board of Education CNR Fund 6 for technical fees for Leger Middle School addition and renovations.
Next.
Okay, discussion. I was in here two weeks ago when this was tabled. I think there's a couple of factors in here that are just a larger issue. If we look at the proposed timeline from the superintendent of schools, which was targeting a possible referendum in May of 2013. So I think a fundamental question would be, there's no sense spending $20,000 unless we're, we're willing to hope for good results from the $20,000 such that the results will allow us to say, sure, if we want to do that, let's, well, at least we want people to decide at referendum whether or not we should do it and move the question forward to referendum. We also have the mayor coming, bringing, I guess, say, developing would be the right word, trying to develop a proposal, a concrete proposal that would create a new town building. The new town building would house the police department because the building they're in is really in very poor shape. And so fundamentally, as a council, my question is, would we be willing to move both of these forward or do we think we would need to prioritize one over the other? And if so, do we have a process that we would want to do that? I was at the building committee meeting, the permanent building committee is willing to do anything. They weren't real anxious to take what was, what they view as an open-ended question of what do we do? They would much prefer that we gave them a more finite question to deal with and and then they'd be happy to look, do whatever work was necessary and come back and, uh, make a recommendation, uh, based on whatever question they were asked. Um, but what I just personally feel we should not do is allow either one of these projects to just sort of move forward at its pace and then be the first one to get to referendum merely because it moved more quickly than the other. Uh, because my experience in the past is if we do that, uh, the first thing that's going to happen is you're going to have some other group in town that's going to say, you know, why are we voting on this when what we really need is that? It doesn't matter which of these two things it is. So I just, what I'm looking for is from a sense of the council was recommendations, really think would be the right way to take all of these subjects and move forward. Counselor Wodecki?
Well, I from what I've ever heard from prominent studies, I don't agree with them on shelves, but in this case, if we don't allow the $20,000 to the school board to find out if it's even feasible, we don't even know if it's a project that we're going forward there. By the same token, the mayor is asking for $20,000 to, to decide about a police station. Until I know what they cost, I don't know that we can't send both forward together as we did before with the last school project and what with the fire station. I mean, it's, without knowing the cost, I mean, if, if the middle school's going to be $20 million like the last study said it was going to be, I don't think we're going to put forward to the voters. If it's seven and a half million dollars, it's a lot more likely that we will. I, I don't think that we have to compete the two projects against each other because the other alternative may be that the mayor finds out building a police station is $15 million and he doesn't want to pursue that either. So without knowing the cost, I don't know how we can decide to say, yeah or nay.
Uh, okay, well, in, in addressing that, uh, in the mayor's case, uh, right now, he's looking at, he's looking at, I think, the equivalent of some of the money that was already spent in the last study on, on town buildings because I think what he's looking at is there's several different town properties. Where would the police station go? What size does it need to be? He, he's got several questions. In the Board of Education's case, uh, it sounds to me like they've already targeted a specific proposal. The specific proposal, if you're adding footprint for a known number of students and if that's, if that's all you're going to do and you already know the cost because people can tell you, um, unless there's some unusual condition of the land, um, then you know the cost. It's X number per square foot and we already heard a number tonight. Uh, the bigger unknown would be, and what I think is really the harder nut to crack in this case is, uh, the question of what money should be spent on the existing building. Superintendent said basically the state will pay two-thirds of any new footprint, but they're not going to pay for renovations, uh, and modifications to the existing footprint. They don't, they don't do that. Um, and it's almost to me like if you were, if you were telling me you were going to spend $20,000 to study, should we, should we do Plan A over here or should we just go over here and build a complete new middle school for three grades? That might make a little bit more sense to me, but we already know what the footprint addition should cost. The modifications are, I can tell you, are going to be almost entirely at the expense of the, of the town unless they are specific to ADA code violations. Otherwise, the state's not going to chip in on, on doing that. So if the, the previous number, which, which may or may not be all that accurate, but if it was 19 million or something, though, that's, that's two and a half out of seven and a half for the addition, the rest is the 12 million, that would all be on the town. And I, yeah, I think, I don't think we would take that, that forward.
No, but they don't even know if it's feasible to build the addition there. I mean, that's what part of the study is concerned and you need to know if, if you can even build it.
I, I'm not sure why we would need $20,000 to figure that out. I mean, we know what the wetlands are in town, right? And it wouldn't cost $20,000 to do a wetland study. So you either have the footprint or you don't. And, uh, I guess I just don't understand that part of the whole discussion.
Superintendent Schools is here, why don't you ask him that question?
Well, okay. Mr. Ginnear? Doctor Ginnear?
Uh-oh. Well, then, the last time we tried to ask this question, we did the study, I think it was up to a town. And, uh, and what we got from that study was that it was a two-dimensional line drawing. It effectively said you have these classrooms and this stage and so forth. And then, for some reason, they added an auditorium on that no one from Bordey certainly asked them to add on. So that study did not provide for us a conceptual drawing of what we were talking about. It was way more expensive than what we're talking about. I'm talking about a wing to accommodate children, sixth grade children, and we need, we need to find out if it's feasible and we need an architect rendering so that ultimately we can come to the board and we would then come to the town council and say, this is what we're, we're talking about. The other part that, that Mr. Sullivan is, is talking about is we don't know what has to be done to the other building. It might have to be literally almost a separate wing with a kind of a passageway or something to get back to the other building. I am personally committed to doing this in the most economic way possible. You, you know what our goals are. We, you know what our educational goals are. If we can do this for $150,000 a year and do this at no expense to the taxpayers. So as far as I'm concerned, the, the police station is off the table because the schools won't cost the, the town a nickel. We will do this at a savings and as Mr. France and I have talked about, I know why you're supportive, is we could, we could reduce the minimum budget requirement because we're going to close a school. We can make this a better school system, more economical, less costly for the town and go into a building project arm-in-arm, as, as Mayor and I have talked about, with a, with a police station that this town needs and, and receive support from people who are interested in maintaining an attractive school system and support from people who understand that our, our police department has, their building needs. And we could go into this at a, at a, at a municipal cooperative level and the school would, would, would provide no additional expense to, to, in fact, it, it would be a cost-saving. And of course, what we're talking about here, by the way, is expenditure of Board of Ed C N R money. We're, we're not talking about town council money. So, so that's my reason why I, I think we need a detailed plan and, and as I, as I say, I'm not a civil engineer and I just want to be sure we can actually do this and I would like to really show people what we're, what we're looking at. So that's, that's why I think it's worth an architect's time. And I don't know if it's going to be $20,000. We, we just sort of threw that out there and we're going to, we're going to ask an architect to do the two things. Give us a rendering of the wing and, and give us a look at the, the current building that may have to be adjusted for, for ADA purposes. But if there are code violations, then the town, the, the state would in fact give us a two-thirds for that. So it, it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a complex picture, which is another reason why I'd like to have a real architect look at a real plan and say, if it's a $7 million job with $3 million of renovations and it comes to a $10 million, what would the exact reimbursement be for the town ledger? Then we would come to the town council and say, this is what we're talking about. Uh, and, and as Mr. Wodecki said, we're not going to ask the, the town to absorb a, you know, a 15, $16 million project. We, we, we understand it. Just like we started the budget process this year by saying that the, the town was going to have to absorb a $700,000 increase and, and in order to deliver a budget at a zero percent increase, we had to cut 1.1 million. The board made that decision on its own. There, there was no coercion by anyone. In the same vein, we're going to bring you a proposal that frankly, we're, we're not so concerned about the town council, we're far more concerned about the voters. And the voters in this town want to make sure we're spending their money in, in an efficient way and we're going to bring you a plan that is going to be feasible and credible in detail. That's why I would.
Yes, I just, I just want to follow up because the question, the specific question, you give a very passionate response. You're, you're, you're a passionate advocate for your educational program. I appreciate that. But, but it was really a specific question about the feasibility of adding enough square footage through in addition somewhere to be able to house 180 students in, in sixth grade. Um, and that's a, to me, that's a fairly straightforward question.
I don't know how we would heat it, for example, Mr. Sullivan. I don't know that. I'm not a civil engineer. Now, if, if it, if the heating plant could be provided by the two units that we currently have, then maybe the $7 million becomes a $6.5 million. If it means we have to do a separate heating plant, then that's a different issue. You know, and again, I'm like way out of my league when, when it comes to civil engineering.
Sorry. Can I, can I, um, having been involved in a building project before, the, the purpose of this step is to provide drawings that can then.
Speak to the microphone, we're sorry, people can hear you.
Oh, I'm not loud enough? I'm usually loud enough. Sorry.
No, if, if you're wa, I'm, I'm, thousands, millions are watching on the internet. They want to hear you, Rebecca.
You know, like I said, having been involved in a building project in the past, this, what this step does, and Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Eichelberg have been involved with economic development and zoning issues, they're familiar with this step as well. It provides, the architect does the drawings so that you can then go out and find out if, what your HVAC is going to be, what your, um, uh, concrete's going to be, what your steel's going to be. This, these will be the drawings that will then be that next step because otherwise, if all you have is our little sheet of paper, we're going to have to pay even more to get renderings because that's what this does. This provides us with that step to get the renderings because we don't want to spend more than $20,000 and if you, if we're asking for up to, it can vary easily. Hopefully, you know, there's not a lot of building projects going on, so I'm sure it's very competitive for architects right now. We may not have to spend $20,000. And again, the other building project that I was involved in, that's what we went up to, $20,000 and we got way more than that because these companies want to build. So they'll give you a lot of extra things that would have normally cost more. So that's why you do this. Sorry.
Is it fair to say then, and this goes back to Chairman Sullivan's statement about wetlands, things like that, is it safe to say then that the feasibility is not a question of space or property lines or wetlands, things like that? It's, the feasibility is how much will the final cost to the taxpayer be? Once we have these plans and we go out for bid with them and they're, and we're told it's going to cost seven, eight million dollars? That's the feasibility, not, um, oh, you can't put anything there because whatever reason?
It's both.
Yeah, it is.
It's both, but the bigger picture is what is it going to cost the taxpayer?
Because, because I think we could answer the first part of that, you know, the wetlands and all of that, pretty easily. We certainly don't need $20,000 to answer those kinds of questions.
Well, but we also don't know, whatever we do in that wing, I, I, I don't know, and that's why I want an architect to tell me, uh, what sort of, uh, upgrades we might be mandated to make. Again, it goes back to the feasibility. So if, if they say, well, you're going to have to have, you know, 100% ADA compliance, not, not being grandfathered to where we are right now, 1972. If, 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 well, I guess to your point, yes, then maybe the seven, $7 million wing that would cost the taxpayer $150,000 a year might go up to, to far more than that. But a, a, as Chairman Sullivan said, in, in that case, uh, I, I believe because that'd be a code violation, we would get two-thirds. Okay? So, you know, again, so maybe it's $7 million, maybe it's, maybe it's more than that, but we still, uh, we, we get ADA compliance and we get upgrades, uh, to, to the, to the existing building, but we get two-thirds of that back. So then the, the bottom line price becomes, you know, $300,000 to, to the taxpayer. So, yeah, I mean, I, actually, a, as we're talking now, I'm becoming more convinced that it's a great idea. And the other thing is, you know, I, I, watch out, I, I was an English major. There's, there seems to be, there seems to be a poetic balance here. I told you, I think that we need to go into this arm-in-arm with the town. The mayor's sitting right next to me, he's looking, and this is strange coincidence, he's looking for $20,000 and I'm looking for $20,000. Isn't that a coincidence? And Chairman Sullivan makes the point, do we go into it at odds or do we go into it together? I say we go into it together as a resident. If you want to, right? As a resident of this town, I say we go into it together.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Frank, or Counselor France?
Um, I guess my, my point is more to, if I do the rough numbers from the facility study, assuming the two-thirds, approximately $21 million for the new school, that would leave the town open for about $7 million. If we have a $7 million addition, town's open for about $2, $2.5 million plus any renovations, which, we're looking at $5 million renovations, why would we renovate an existing building and not build new for the same amount of money? And why are we looking at that alternative to the cost to the taxpayer at the same time as we're looking at just the wing?
A 450, a 450 student middle school, uh, would cost well more because what we're talking about with a brand-new building, and, because you don't get, as Chairman Sullivan knows very clearly, you don't get the same reimbursement rate for auditoriums, you don't get the same reimbursement rate for gymnasiums. There's a lot that goes into the, the superstructure of the, the school that, that we have now. Uh, and, and my, my estimate, I had to sort of poke around a little bit, my estimate would be a, a little bit more than $40,000, probably about $45 million. I, I would, I would not, at, at least the construction that I've seen, I've talked to people in Waterford and other places, that if we could get a brand-new middle school for $21 million, I, I'd be extremely interested.
So the study that was done was flawed by order of magnitude?
Well, no.
We had broken the wind.
No, 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 no. The facility study, there's an option. We do build it on-site, six, seventh, eighth grade, total price $24 million. So I guess, um, six, seventh, eighth grade, $24 million, which is an $8 million price type of town. If we get through this feasibility study that you want to do for $20,000, we find that the renovations to the property are $6 million. Sure, you bet, then maybe we would do that. That's why we wanted to do the feasibility.
Why would we do it at the same time to bring and look at the proposals?
Well, that's, that's a great point. Let's do the $20,000 study and we'll come and look at both of those. I'm certainly not opposed to a new school.
I didn't think you were.
So, so, but the 20, but the $20,000 feasibility study provides the basis for that dialogue.
Right. I guess my point is why would we dare with adjustable addition if looking at the, based on this study?
Right.
The numbers are probably correct or within a million dollars. And at that point, maybe the decision might be.
Maybe.
To build a facility. I don't know.
But I don't either.
But if you only bring the proposal to build a wing and we get, yes or no?
Well, I believe, I could bring back to the council, because there are middle schools going up around the state. I, I can definitely come back and give you price tags of, of buildings that are not, you know, this, this year, the last, so, I don't think that's a, a, a difficult, so I, I think that's a good point. I think, so the question is, can, can, can we do it? The study would tell us that. What would be the differential with a new building? Yeah, well, I think all of those are great options. So, thank.
High question from Mayor. What is the cost of the life of a safety building for a jail?
Seven to $10 million. I'm not sure. I've heard it's $7, $8 million.
Okay. And that's for their police and dispatch?
Okay. Yes.
To your question, Chairman Sullivan, the, uh, the Permanent Municipal Building Committee doesn't want to get asked, what should we do? They do want to be given projects. Would they be given this project?
Yes. Well, I, I think the charter actually was for projects more than $25,000. So I, I'm, I'm not sure how it got, I mean, yeah, the, my understanding, and I'm, Mr. Sullivan's on that, they, they do projects. This was, this was something that, that the board felt we could handle.
You're going to give them the feasibility study or you're going to give them the project? That's the project.
Oh, the project, that's the project, yes. No, the feasibility study, we thought we would control. And then, of course, if it ever went to referendum in cap, then, then obviously we'd go to the permanent municipal building.
Um, I think we said in that audience that we could put members of a particular group that they were building for would be on the committee. So why wouldn't we put the, okay, they're on the, so, why wouldn't they do this too?
Well, I'm, I'm on it, so.
Okay. So why wouldn't we have them do this?
Well, I don't, I don't think they're, I think, they're, in my conversation, it has been that.
has been that the feasibility study is done, the town has decided to move forward with the project, they take over. They don't necessarily do the feasibility study. And I'm not sure that we're calling it the right thing. I don't think it's really a feasibility study. It's an architectural request, yeah.
Okay, I, I, let me summarize this way. I think what I'm hearing is that what you want to do is you want to spend $20,000, you want to have an architect investigate what is really a spectrum of options. Because there's always a spectrum. There's always the $6 million plan and there's the $100 million plan and there's, there's a million options in between. To, what you've decided is what you really want to do for the good of education of the town is move sixth grade over to be co-located with the seventh and eighth. Now, how do you do that? Whether that's simply build an addition and nothing else, or build an addition and modify the existing building, or build a whole new building? You just spend $20,000 and come up with, come back to us with what was the, what you determined was the best option out of all of those things? Did I get that?
Yes.
Okay, and if that's what you want to do, then I will, I will, I will support the motion that's before us tonight.
Damn, you're not just doing...
That would change. I think it was, it was passing that got that changed.
As long as we're not doing just...
No, no, we will, we will come back with a comprehensive set of alternatives that will be practical and viable.
That's been one of my fears is that we looked at one option and that's all we're looking forward for. If we're going to look at this study, does that here are several options?
I'm with you.
What's the best option for the town?
Right. Yeah, the, the goal, Chairman Sullivan hit it right on the head. The goal is to get the sixth graders to participate in a quality education along with seventh and eighth graders. And how and where and when we do all this is, is not important at this point. We're going to come back, then ultimately, we're going to go to the voters and, and put a, put a, what we think will be a, a cost-effective proposal on the table.
It's been 10 years since I shared the building. This is what we did, but we spent $20,000 and we looked at a range of options and then had to, well, put something in the middle. So I mean, I, I don't think, you know, if you, if you bring the architect to one site and say, this is what we're thinking, tell me what the options are and what can be done, I think the $20,000, I have to be able to do that. Okay, other discussion? Are we ready to move the question? Roxanne, please call the room.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Motion passes. Item two, finance.
Motion to adopt a close fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget in the amount of $29,169,502 comprised of a general government budget of $19,624,588 and a Board of Education budget of $29,544,964.
Okay, and this is exactly the same as it was when it went to the...
Nailing for the can.
Yes.
Okay, very well. Any other discussion?
All the permanent college from that state.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Roxanne, call the room.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Seven papers, zero posts?
Motion passes. Item two, finance.
Motion to adopt a close fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget in the amount of $29,169,502 comprised of a general government budget of $19,624,588 and a Board of Education budget of $29,544,964.
Okay, and this is exactly the same as it was when it went to the...
Nailing for the can.
Yes.
Okay, very well. Any other discussion?
All the permanent college from that state.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Roxanne, call the room.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seven papers, zero posts?
Motion passes. Okay, finance number three.
Motion to appoint J. H. Cohen to conduct audience services from fiscal year beginning June 30, 2012 in the amount of $50,520 and 2013 in the amount of $51,500 with the option of auditing the town's financial statements for each of the two subsequent fiscal years in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 11 of the Town's Ordinance, Real Estate Number 2011, as a review of the audience service.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Anything needs to be said here?
This is essentially the second year of a three-year contract, also per year.
Well, I'm required by open to, to, to award him.
Any other discussion, questions? Roxanne, call the room.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Seven papers, zero posts?
Motion passes. Item four, I think is a, is a typo, it just says General Act 611 under correct, Roxanne. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, I move into a new executive session for the purpose of reviewing records, reports, and statements of strategy or negotiation with respect to collective bargaining, this action stating about prejudice and the town council's rights to discuss a private strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes. And presidents will be the town, members of the town council, the mayor, and the HR director, Mr. Don Stein. Second. Any discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Roxanne, call the room.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.